The November 13th meeting. You would please stand and have a word of prayers, please. Gracious heaven father, we indeed thank you for this day. We thank you for our many blessings of life. We ask you at night to be with veterans, past and present, for the many things that they've done for our freedom. Tonight, Lord, we ask you to be with us as a board, guide and direct our decisions in the best interests of our city. These things I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is approval of the agenda. Need a motion for approval. Some move?
Second.
We have a motion now, a second. Any further discussion or any additions provisioned? There be none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The agenda is approved. Item number three, citizens' comments. Tonight we have Mr. Jerry Carey. If you would, Mr. Carey, come to call in here and tell us who you are and where you live, sir.
My name is Jerry Carey. I live at 2950 Fairview Boulevard. And I am one of the property owners along Fairview Boulevard that received the letter with notice of post annexation or study of annexation. We, as property owners in the county, went to sort of express our, maybe our, we're not pleased, you know, quite naturally, we went up. People don't like change, you know, and naturally, we don't like change, but we had some questions about it. And we wanted to pose these questions to the planning commission, and I don't expect you to give me answers now, but I do, I do want to, and I can send you these in an email if you'd like. But what we would like to know is, we'll have a 22% increase, roughly 22% increase in our taxes from our current county rate to the county plus city rate once, if we are, if we do get annexed. And, your laptop went off. Okay. We have, we're agricultural out there, you know, people have cows and horses and things like that. We're not, we're not city properties. I've got three horses on four acres out there, which the county doesn't have a problem with, but I don't know what the city will do with that. We, we, we want to know if there's minimum lot sizes. What kind of changes would we see in, basically, our way of life? Right now, you know, if my, if my pine trees fall down, I can go up there and cut them up, you know, I call the fire department, I get a burn permit during the seasons that you require burn permits. And I can burn my brush out there, but if I'm, if I'm in the city, then there's an ordinance against burning in the city, and so I would no longer be able to do that. So we don't really want to see a way of life changed. We, we also, we question the, the timing, as, you know, as we have done in the past, and, and we're wondering if, if there's, if there's something going on down, down at 840 that, that, you know, that we're not aware of, that the, that maybe we ought to be aware of, that would impact us, you know, as, as property owners here. And we feel like that, that the annexation basically is saying, okay, you won't be good stewards of your property in your home places. We, we're all old folks. We have, you know, we're on limited incomes, we're on social security. We thought, you know, that this time of our life, we wouldn't be seeing a lot of price increases, and so, and we're out in the county, and we like being out in the county. Now, I know, you know, things change. Things always change, and so, we don't, we, we are not, so, we don't live in it with our head in the sand to the point that we don't see changes coming about. But, but we have a real lifestyle there, and we're concerned that, that not only are we going to see our taxes increase, we're going to see our lifestyle change, and we don't really see the city being able to provide any additional services over the services that we currently have. And so, that's, that's questions that we would like to know. And, and if the city thinks that we're, we're not being good stewards of our property. And we'd also, we would, and I've talked to some of my neighbors about this, we would sign a compromise that says, as long as this property stays in my hands, then I can be a county resident, but if I sell the property, I understand that it'll be annexed to the city, or if I apply for any type business license or any type of zoning changes, then it could go to the city. And, and I think we'd all be willing to sign that. And we don't understand the way of progress, but at the same time, we don't want to be run over either. So, I think that's, is...
Did I say it pretty much the way that you'd like me to say it in aggregate? Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four is approval of minutes. Motion and a second.
Move and approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the minutes are approved. Item number five is the recommendation, 2012-10. Don, would you like to update us on the recommendations from the board?
5.1, the recommendations from the sign workshop. Board commissioners approved on first reading the ordinance to set the standards for the computerized digital signs, that it would go into effect six months after second final reading. The second final reading of the bill will be Thursday night. 5.2, the rezoning application for fast pace. Board asked the attorney to draw up the papers for that rezoning. That rezoning will hear its first reading at Thursday night's meeting as well.
I would like to say something on 5.2. If you remember, one of our concerns was parking in front of that for ambulance and/or emergency vehicles. There was three of them down there the other morning. One of them about covered up the, the incoming lane from, from the west. So, that will be a major improvement to that property, having a place for the ambulances and emergency vehicles to park down there.
Yes, sir. After the rezoning is, goes into effect, after the property is rezoned, then they'll come back to the planning commission with a final site plan on that. We ask approval.
Thank you. Item number six is the bonds, and you apparently have nothing for the bonds tonight. Item number seven is old business. We have no old business. Item number eight is all new business tonight. And 8.1 is the vacation of lot six from the Evergreen Industrial Park subdivision flat. Maps, 18 parcel 47-27, 6.97 acres. Kelly Shriver owner. And Mr. Chapellane is here to speak to us regarding the vacation of the lot in the industrial park.
I have a question of clarification. Flat says 5.97. 8.1 says 6.97.
The, track, let's see, 5.97 is the remainder of tracks lot six of the industrial park.
Okay.
Correct.
I see both 6.97 and 5.97, so I'm just looking for clarification. One's to the right of the number six circled and one's below the number six circled.
Right, should be 5.97. That's correct.
Okay. That's okay. And then that'll also need to be corrected on the agenda of 8.1, that has 6.97, and then just make sure the...
And 8.2.
Yes, thank you. And 8.2 of a typo clarification for the record and the minutes.
From what I remember hearing at another meeting, that in order to, for this to be vacated, I've seen it here as one hundred percent of other property owners in industrial parks.
Yes, sir. We've got 1921. I think we have one that's been mailed in from Ohio, one she's meeting in Franklin, and one refused to meet with her, so that's where we stand at that point. We'd like to ask the board to waive that ruling. I think it's an unfair ruling because this happens in many, recently when they approved this new ruling to have all these 100%, it's caused problems where one person decides not to hold up everybody else and not to sign. So we're, you know, asking if we can to not have 100%, but to have whatever majority to sign. It should be the majority that signs the, approves the plat that would be in effect rather than just having one person who would not sign control everybody else. And at this point, we have more than a majority.
I believe I'm going to have to refer this to legal's opinion.
Don, just inform me, that's in the subdivision regulations, and the only way that, that could be done is the subdivision regulations would have to be amended, and this board would not be the ones that amends it. They make a recommendation, the board commissioners?
They would amend.
Okay. You would have to amend the subdivision regulations to have a majority, supermajority, three-fourths, four-fifths, or leave it like it is. As the subdivision regulations stand right now, you can't do it, you can't waive it. You'd have to amend the regulation, and then you'd have to come back, because you can't, you can't waive the regulation.
Is it 100%?
Yes.
Okay.
Who is the one that's not signing?
I believe there's one Dairy Berry with the paving company.
What's that block number?
That's the lot to the west. I'm not showing all the lots, but he's, he's the furthest one to the west from Highway 100, furthest one from her, from this property.
Is Kelly not supposed to be here? She's representative.
Representative representative.
He's not, but he's the seller, he's not the buyer.
He's the property owner. He needs to be present.
Under the circumstances, I think we have to make a motion to defer until we get the subdivision regulations taken care of.
You'd have to defer it or dismiss it, and you'd have to refile it, it'd make more sense to defer it. And then it'd have to be put on the agenda to consider the regulation itself, bring it in and put, because that's not on the agenda. Bring it into the board and go through the regulation and see what you want to change it to. I don't think, and just my own personal thought, I don't think you'd want to make it a simple majority, because that's too easy to change plaits. You might want to make it a, a supermajority, that's your, your call. If you want to make it a simple majority, you certainly have that right, but I'm saying that's pretty easy to change a plat with a simple majority. Going from 100% to 50% is a pretty big drop. That's your call. But it'd have to be either dismissed and refiled or deferred and put on the agenda to consider the topic of vacation of plaits, so you could have a full discussion, and then the board would have to set that up.
Mayor, what do you consider the supermajority? What is the percentage?
Anything more than, than 50%. You see, in some legislative bodies, supermajority's two-thirds. In some legislative bodies, it's three-fourths. It'd be what this legislative body considered it to be. Anything better, greater than 50%. If you wanted to make it two-thirds, three-fourths, four-fifths, anything less than 100%.
Didn't we ask for... I'm sorry.
You gotta keep in mind that the subdivision regulations are written that way to protect, to protect property owners of subdivisions. If you, if you look at, if you look at, you know, Castleberry or any of these subdivisions, somebody wanted to come in and vacate their lot from that subdivision, and, and it didn't require 100% signature, and you done 50%, they got 50%, then they could relatively do some things on that property that they couldn't do because of restricted covenants of Castleberry's subdivision. So, it's written that way to protect homeowners that, that buy into a subdivision, knowing that there's restrictive covenants and things of that nature. So you need to be careful when you look at that, very carefully, how you look at that.
Just, just a question, I may have been mistaken on. What did we require? When they wanted to put the tow-in lot down in the industrial park, we required a certain number of seating tourists. I don't believe it was 100%.
Well, that was to change the covenants.
Right.
It wasn't to, to vacate a lot out of a subdivision.
And that was 80%, right? 80%?
No. 75%.
75%. I knew it was a figure that was out there. Whenever they get it back, I'm working.
But they're entirely different issues. One's getting out of the subdivision, the other is, is just getting out of covenant restriction.
Move to defer. Second.
I have to ask one thing before you vote on that. If we could, if I could ask that the plat be approved subject to her receiving the full signatures in the, in the future here, in the next few weeks or so.
Sir, no, that, I wouldn't want to do that, because the only thing that the city has in there is their property, and if the city agrees to let them get out of the subdivision, that's fine. But under the current standing of the, is the issue now stands, it takes 100%, and I wouldn't want to make agreements like that. You'd want to, to consider in its entirety the issue of what it takes to get out, and then, and you would only consider whether the city agrees to let them out. You don't want to get in the position of, of what somebody else does.
So we have a motion to defer and a second. Any discussion? I have one question myself. If this fails, even after, if it comes back, do they have a right to go to Board of Zoning Appeals?
The Board of Zoning Appeals could not change this because it's clearly says what it is. It's 100% or it's, or it's, you stay in.
Well, in clarification, he's asking to do something that our ordinance says we cannot do, and we do not have the authority to do. So we're asking to defer this subject, so then we can address how we could do it, if possible, and it be across the board, because the vacation doesn't just apply to your subject. So I understand your question of move along, but if we need to look at the whole situation, that is us moving forward versus saying it's not a consideration.
We were thinking of doing it simultaneously, but yeah, that's fine.
I understand.
If I could add one more thing for Ms. Shriver, I would suggest that you...
Ms. Shriver.
I'm sorry.
She's the one person, Ms. Pagan. Ms. Pagan.
Okay. That it be, you sent out as much certified mail as possible to that individual that you can't get ahold of, and let them make a statement as yes or no?
Yes.
Or that they have received it? I think that would weigh a little bit on the decision of the board when we come back to look at this again.
She'll send a certified letter.
That's a suggestion.
We have a motion, second. We're on discussion. All those in favor say the bounce is aye.
100%.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Do we need a motion for deferral of 8.2 also? Make a motion for deferral of 8.2?
Second. There's a motion for deferral of 8.2 and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Just and/or take action on possible annexation of property with road frontage on Fairview Boulevard near and around State Route 840. Mr. Volin, I'd like you to start us out and explain the city's viewpoint.
You've got a map that shows 24 parcels of property that's near and around the 840 interchange. We have had a whole lot of interest, commercial interest, in and around that area over the last month and a half or so. Properties that are in the county, if a commercial entity develops on that property, the city can't enforce any of its zoning ordinance or any of our design standards for those parcels of property, even though they're in our urban growth boundary, we still don't have the authority to enforce our zoning or design standards. So, you run into a situation where if the property is developed in the county and then later on brought into, to the city, it's brought in as existing non-conforming and may never come into conformance with the city's standards. So I thought I'd put it on y'all's agenda for y'all to discuss, to see if y'all would like to make a recommendation to the board for annexation, or just to find out what, what y'all's thoughts were, to try to be able to regulate what goes in, in that area, if there's ever any commercial or even residential subdivisions that would like to develop into that area.
I'd like to say this is on for discussion since it's going to be fact, so I'm not asking for a question. One question I might have for you. John, have we heard any plans as far as the WADC's plans are sourced possibly in that direction?
Well, WADC has a decentralized sewer system that they will allow to go in this area. They haven't discussed laying any new sewer lines, but the possibility of having decentralized systems is there. That's what the water authority is recommending for this area is a, what is considered a step system, which is onsite treatment, and then either spray or drip irrigation on a spray field.
Does the city really think that commercial development can be handled with that kind of a sewer system?
They do it all over the place. Mercer's Barrel, 85% of their sewer system is decentralized systems, including residential and commercial. They just built a, a Love's Truck stop at the second victim exit going west that is on a decentralized sewer system. The water authority has adopted the Mercer's Barrel model on the decentralized systems. So, from what I understand, Mercer's Barrel's had their systems for the last 10, 15 years, and it seems to be operating just perfect.
While I understand Mr. Carey's concerns and those of you that are here, I would like city attorney to address, because I know we haven't had discussed about signing where, you know, someone can say that once they sell their property, it can be, you know, changed. And I don't think we can do that, to understand, we've talked about in the past. I'd like the people here to understand that on a legal aspect.
We can't do that, because that's contract legislation, and it's illegal. The only way you can do something like that is the way the federal government created the Smoky Mountains National Park. If the city bought the property, you can allow them to live there as long as, as they live there, but I don't, I don't know many cities that do that. But you can't agree that if this property ever changes hands and it's annexed into the city. Nothing wrong with a citizen doing that. The city can't do it, because it, that's the rankest form of contract legislation.
Okay. I, I just wanted that to be clarified, but also, it's very important to me for everybody to understand that if we, if we don't look at annexation down through this area, we're saying it's non-conforming, and if someone wants to come in, it could be a situation where we have no control over the regulations or anything, which is important to me, that we are able to control that. So I think we should discuss, like, you know, the impact that they're concerned about, but also the impact on the city if we're not in control of what happens if a commercial entity comes in.
It's my understanding that they would still be, they would still have to adhere to the county building codes and the county building specifications. Is that correct?
But are they as stringent as our...
I think, I think they're probably as stringent, but don't they have a minimum building size of 5,000 feet on commercial, the county?
I'm not for sure. I know they don't have the same design standards that we do. So...
I thought, I saw that they had a minimum building size for commercial in the county that was quite a big, quite a good-sized building. With the lack of sewer in that size building, you know, I think we're, maybe jumping the gun here on annexation. My question is, you could, are the properties on the intersection of 100 and Liberty Road that are not colored in, on the north and south side of 100, are they in the city now?
Yes.
Now, which ones was that?
If you go to the intersection of Liberty Road and Highway 100, there's a large number of properties that are not shaded in.
Yeah, all of those are in the city.
They're already in the city.
Oh, I thought you were saying on the north and south.
Anything that's open from the county line back to Walker Road, if it's not highlighted in pink or blue, is in the city, if it's got road frontage on Highway 100. Back to what you were stating about the 5,000 square foot building in the county, well, the county, if it's in the county, they can opt to do septic.
And they also can put up a solid metal building.
Well, that's what I'm saying, for the sound regulations, that we have, we won't be in trouble with that.
Would you clarify the red and blue highlights?
I just done that so all of it wouldn't be red and all of it wouldn't be blue, and they run together, so we could actually see the, the difference in the property lines.
And from Walker Road to the current highway or Fairview Boulevard boundary of the city, is that's all county property as well, except for Highway 100?
There's a few that's, that's in the city, on, on back that way there. I think on back that way, there's probably four to five that's in the city.
So it's, it's not continuous from the boundary of the city to Walker Road?
No, sir. The reason why I picked these 24 out is because this is the area that people are inquiring about, that calling.
And primarily, the reason they're doing that's because it's, it's deeper. The road frontage is deeper than it is on the left-hand side going west, because they only have 1,000 feet on the left-hand side, right?
Well, in cases where somebody wants to pick up large tracts of property and put them all together, if it's, if the part that they're... if it's, if the part that they're annexing in is in the city and the rest of the property is in the county, even though it's not in our urban growth boundaries, we can still annex the whole property. So if we've got the road frontage and they want to have the road frontage and the property behind it that's not, we can go ahead and annex that in.
You can, even though it's not in the urban growth.
Even though it's not in the urban growth boundary.
Okay. As I stated a while ago, I'm not mentioning the name, but I have had one person that was interested in doing so. That had quite a bit of road frontage, so I will pass that along. So, and trying to say this, basically right now, you would welcome anyone that wanted to come into the city without any forced annexation, right?
Yes, sir.
That was going to be my motion.
Okay. I think that's probably the way that we see it at this point in time.
And I've had a couple of people that's, since they've gotten the letters, have expressed that they wanted their property brought within, brought into the city.
Yeah. And I'll just, she gonna make a motion, I'll keep my.
Let me ask a question first. So the people that want to come into the city, if they go ahead and say, "We want to come into the city now," then we do that. If there are people later on that have interest in their property and decide they want to be annexed, then they have to pay a fee.
That is correct.
So there's no fee now if they voluntarily come in, but if someone comes and says, "Hey, we want your property for that business and we're going to pay you a lot of money," they've got to pay the fee.
That is correct.
This is, we need a motion on this, this is just for discussion, right?
It's for discussion or take action, so once a motion's made, then we'll take action.
Motion's been made, has it been second?
No, I hadn't officially stated it.
He hadn't officially stated it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that from the current end of the city limits to this property that's in question, that anyone that has property on Highway One Hundred that wants it to be brought into the city limits will be allowed to without the fee, but not to force anyone in that doesn't want it.
I'll second that.
And remember that the waiving of the fees, it's been done in the past, with waiving of the fees have to be approved by the board commissioners.
This is just a recommendation to go to them.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Floor's open for more discussion.
Well, I do have a question on it. We've been battling this for the last four years, is creating islands inside the city limits. This is, we did annex in from the rec center all the way out to side Eight Forty to the county line and we're just going to be generating more islands that we're going to have to deal with sooner or later. And we just need to consider that part of it right there. And at the same time, consider the requests and answer the questions that the gentleman spoke about a little bit earlier, because there's some that are going to be positive as far as grandfathering animals and things like that, once you've got them on there. And there's some, we can answer those positively, but I'd like to see us answer all those questions as soon as best we can, so that you can take a good hard look at it, you know, as far as what it's going to be. So I would.
Well, with that being stated, Don, would you be able to address some of the smaller answers of considerations, such as the minimum lot size for animals or agriculture in the city ordinance?
Well, when a piece of property is annexed, it comes into the city.
For existing nonconforming use.
And anything there is grandfathered in until somebody wants to make a change to it.
So a grandfathered in, for the concerns of Mr. Carey, a grandfathered in means nothing can be forced upon him of our current ordinances, as long as no changes in zoning?
Well, there would be no, well, when the property comes into the city, it'd come in as an RS forty, which is our lowest residential zoning, unless otherwise stipulated. It could be brought in as commercial, it could be brought in, you know, as.
It could come in as agriculture.
I was going to say, can it come in as agriculture?
It can come in as agriculture. But even if it came in at RS forty and they was using their property as agriculture, their property could continue to be used as agriculture until they made a change in it themselves.
As far as animal goes, the only restriction that I'm aware of, and I may be mistaken about this right here, is if, for example, you had horses on it and that's all he had on there and they were eliminated for a period of, how many years is it?
One year.
One year.
If he has horses.
I'm asking to make sure everybody knows everything, then they wouldn't be allowed to come back. But as long as they're there, they're grandfathered in.
If you have horses, if you have three acres, you can have horses in the city.
Yeah, if you've got cows or pigs or chickens or anything like that, the discontinuance ordinance is thirty months.
Thirty months.
So if they had cows and they sold them off and didn't have them for a year, they could still bring them back as long as they can go over that thirty months.
Just to make sure.
Once it goes over that thirty months, then the grandfather clause is lapsed.
Yeah, just to make it, just so have some full disclosure about some of these things that we're looking at. I don't think the goal is to change anybody's way of life in those areas out there. There's going to be, as you say, there's going to be change any way we go. It's either now or later and it's hard to say how later, how much later it's going to be or how much it's going to affect you. But I think if you send those questions in, you'll find that there's going to be a minimal impact on your, I think your tax rate is, I'm not sure how that's going to be affected, it's going to be a minimal amount also. Yes, sir.
I have, I have created a spreadsheet that printed out, you know, for the current strategy.
Very minimal. I know it's very minimal, we looked at a study on it before when we looked at bringing it in. So, and for the services that you would come into, I think would definitely be worth what you would be doing, coming in there for the future that the city's planning on growing at that point. But I'd like for you to have the opportunity to ask, Don, these questions and get some clarifications on them so that y'all could be happy with what you know's going to happen, before we go too much further with it. But I don't want to create any more islands than we have to, because it just causes problems, as we have all seen. There's places in this city limits right now, there's this county one side of the street and city on the other side of the street. But I just.
I know this is my citizen project.
Right.
But can I, can we dial out here that?
I can let you come forward, Mr. Carey, but I've got a couple of things I'd like to say. Come on while you're coming up. Some of our concern is y'all happen to be in the major growth boundary in this county. And if your next door neighbor sells, we're trying to protect you also.
I understand that.
Because we want something, if you choose enough to sell your property, we want something next door to you that protects you, as far as the design of it. And here again, we're not up here to force annexation on you. We're here to protect y'all as much as we can. And that's my ultimate goal, because I can't say whether your next door neighbor or your cross-street neighbor's going to protect you. If the county comes in and they build a big massive building that you don't like.
Sure.
Fairview had nothing to do with it, if you're not, we're here to protect you. And with our design criteria that we have set up, if you have noticed all around here, that's part of this board here helped bring that forward. And that's my opinion of that, rather than any revenue sources that comes from out there, because it would be very minor.
And being able to regulate the growth out there in our neighborhood is also good for us and we understand that. You know, that is to our advantage, we do. And see, before tonight, I was not aware of the grandfather, you know. And, you know, our horse is very important to us, you know. I mean, they're, they basically are just pretty much our lifestyle.
It's your lifestyle and I understand that.
And so, so having, having the threat of that being taken away from us, you know, was very concerning, you know. And I'm sure Ms. Linda back there, you know, and Jeff is running his cattle on Mr. Earl's place there, you know, and Ms. Hazel's got, and people like that, you know. And knowing that they will be able to continue with their farms is something that I guess, I guess we weren't all aware of. We would, as far as city services, there's not, you know, and I know Metro has, has areas, you know, that are, you know, this is out in the country and we can't do this for y'all out there, you know, but they have different tax rates out there like that.
I think with our, the way we're set up with the county, we still got to respond to you regardless. So that's, you know, I don't, am I stating that right? Police and fire protection and ambulance and that type of thing.
With the new contract, we don't service the county with fire unless there is some mutual aid that has to be sent out, if it's requested by the county, but it would have to be a huge fire.
Your first responder call to, we would call, we would respond to assistance.
Yes.
So currently, is that, I'm not sure I understand that, but if my house caught on fire right now, the county would not, I mean, the city would not come, would not respond? Well, what is my fire protection then? Do I have some kind of fire protection from the county?
Contract does not come into effect until January first.
January first.
So at this point, you are covered by the Fairview Fire Department as first responder under the mutual aid, under the mutual contract with the county as of January first. That will change to where the primary service will be Williamson County, which they're working on a fire station at Pinewood Road now. Pinewood Road is going to be their Williamson County station in the rural areas and Fairview will be a request or as.
You know, I should answer, okay, okay. All right, I was not aware of that and that, you know, that was, when you said that, that concerned me, seriously, you know, I mean.
It is January before that takes effect. And we've been working on that for quite some time. It was pretty well deliberated before it came to that point. And we'll be adding a lot more services in that area out there as it grows with commercial growth or whatever.
This is not going to take effect before January anyway and at that time, probably the county's going to have time to get a truck out there on Pinewood Road and be able to.
If I'm not mistaken, I don't want to misspeak, but what they're going to do is they're going to have a volunteer fire department out there, is what they're going to have, they're not going to have a man, just to make quick, if I'm wrong, they're not going to have a man stationed out there.
Much like the city fire department used to be back in the olden days.
And it's just, that's, you know, my fear is that's a long way to respond. They're going to be responsible like all the way up to CCC Road and they're going to have to ask us for some response time on it.
Well, also the addition, I'm sorry, I missed something of that contract. They are renting a bay in the fire station on Ninety-Six Highway to cover the CCC Road area. So in essence, the county is coming in on both sides to then work with the county residents from Ninety-Six Highway near the interstate and also on Pinewood Road.
Okay, okay.
I have one other question.
I don't have my list of questions with me at the time, but, you know, the agricultural aspect of the properties out there was a major concern of ours, you know. Of course, you know.
See, it's important to us that y'all come and understand everything, so there's not any misconception and then we can work well together in, you know, in the progress.
We would like that very much, because we feel like in the past that there's been, there has been a a great communications gulf between us as property owners and the city itself, you know, and we don't want that any more than you want that. And being able to, being able to communicate with each other and know, you know, this is the long range plan. I went on the city's website and I tried to find the long range plan. I found all kinds of zoning ordinances and subdivisions and stuff like that on the planning commission's page, but I never found anything that said, "This is the long range growth plan and this is what we expect the city of Fairview to look like twenty years from now," or something like that. We would like to be able to see that, you know, to see how we, how that affects us, how that impacts us. Because, you know, it's always personal. It's always, it's personal to me, it's personal to Billy and Martha, it's personal to Ms. Linda, it's personal to Hazel. It's how does it affect me? And that's, that's the same way, you know. I know exactly how much my property taxes are going to go up, because that's me. That's my money you're talking about now, you know. And there's a whole lot of people that have got elected based on signing a pledge with Grover Norquist saying, "We won't raise your taxes," and so here we are getting our taxes raised and we saying, "Well, where are you?" You know, we, but.
Well, good news is that we lowered the city property taxes and the county went up. So if your taxes went up, your county's going to go up. It is, just to throw one little thing, y'all been around longer than I have and most of y'all have been too, but the first city limits, I believe, was from Horn Tavern Road to Lake Road. So that gives you a little bit of idea of how it's grown in the last fifty-three years.
Yeah, I think, I think it came all the way out.
It's expanded a little bit.
To the rec, to the rec center when I came in eighty-five, it was out to the rec center at that point. If I were to email this list of questions, who should I email this to?
Codes@fairview-tn.org.
Okay, Codes, okay. And will you?
That'll be forwarded out to the planning commission by Don LeVron.
And you will reply to that, you know, to our concerns? Okay, and I'll be glad to share that with my neighbors, so that we do have. And, you know, the document there, you know, that has the list of properties and the various colors and stuff like that. We'd also like to be a part of that, we'd like to know, you know, what is in the city now, what is not in the city. And like I said, it's always personal and we want to know, how does this impact us? And what do we get for the money we pay?
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Thank you.
I have a question for Don, you might have to refer on to Larry. Would we be creating islands? We already have seventeen properties already in the city out there. Would we be creating islands and we already, the zoning is already in the Highway One Hundred area?
No, sir. This wouldn't create any islands.
Any islands at all.
If they were all annexed in.
No, it won't create any islands, period, unless a piece of property wraps behind another and there's no possibility to create one. No, he's saying.
It's road frontage.
It's road frontage.
You may have, you may skip, you may go city, county, city, county, but you're not going to create an island. For an island, it has to be all the way around it.
Because the backside of those properties would still be in the county.
But we're still talking about the first thousand feet?
No, sir.
Both sides of the road.
On both sides of the road.
Okay, I just want to make sure, we clarified all of them.
It would be the opposite of the current island situation we have now. Instead of it being a county island, it would be a city island.
Mr. Chairman, I would like this.
It isn't continuous.
If I might say one other thing, just so that everybody's absolutely clear on this, the grandfather clause, so to speak, that protects these people's property also protects someone who in the interim goes out there and builds a building that meets all the county standards and then says the properties on each side of it are admitted into the city.
Pardon?
Can y'all hear it? I can hardly hear you and I'm thinking, can y'all hear Mr. Cantrell?
I've got my mic on, is that any better?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can you hear me now? As the commercial says, can you hear me now? I just wanted to be sure that everybody understood that the same grandfather clause applies across the board to everybody. The same thing that protects your horses would also protect someone who in the interim, before any annexations did or did not take place, or for this instance, let's say, did take place. If I owned a piece of property and I built a building that meets all the county standards, at the time, the property was in the county, and then at some future date, this gets annexed into the city and let's say each property adjacent on either side of that property did not build anything until it came into the city and was built by the city's design standards. And if the city's design standards was something that made these buildings look much, much better than the one that was built by the county standards, and I'm not knocking the county, but let's say that it was, the same standard that applies. county, but let's say that it was, the same standard that applies on the grandfather clause that, to the building in the middle that was built under the county standards that doesn't look as good as maybe the design standards of the city, that grandfather clause would protect him also. He would not have to change his building to meet the standards of the city, even though he was annexed after the building was built, because he is a prior existing non-conforming use, and as long as he didn't make any changes to that building, continued to use it the way it was, then that building would stay, and if, however it looks, that's how it looks. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that, that the grandfather clause cuts both ways.
And that's the same scenario that you have at Interstate forty. Those buildings were built in the county before they was annexed into the city, so we couldn't control what went out there. So, you have the same scenario at eight forty. If that property is not in the city, then we can't control anything that goes in out there.
But Don, didn't we, in their regulation built into the county, as far as the city goes, the Phantom Club out there, whatever, Stewart, you know what the number was, Phantom three oh nine or four nine?
Phantom three oh nine.
Okay. Didn't it result, didn't it come back into the city ordinance after it was out of use for a certain period of time? I mean, didn't that part of that ordinance that falls into that?
That's the reason why they're not open right now.
Oh, I know. They don't want to pay the money to grow and prove.
Because they're thirty months.
But it did reserve, back to the city from the county, right?
Because they went past the thirty months without having anything in the building.
An open business.
It was discontinued for over thirty months, so...
The ordinance is a little bit complicated, so he can answer all your questions, I'm sure. Call him anytime, day or night.
Any further discussion? Mr. Johnson, I'm going to ask you to repeat your motion.
My motion is to go from the current city limits, wherever it be, at the rec center or wherever Mr. Carey spoke of earlier, eighty-five, wherever that last one is, all the way to the Hickman County line past the eight forty interchange, and give the ability to allow any property owner that has property that borders Highway one hundred, the ability to have their property annexed to the city while not forcing anyone into the city at this time.
Did you say, without the fees?
Without the fees.
Without the fees, okay. And I second that. And no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion, I mean, hold in favor, signify a percent, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Chairman. So, from the rec center all the way out to the county line, okay, I'll have to send out some more letters. Well, I have to send letters to the twenty-four that I sent out to tell them to be on the board of commissioners meeting, but I'll have to send out letters to the other property owners as well, to give them that opportunity.
That letter that if there's any questions, possibly we could answer prior to the meeting by the...
Yes, sir.
...asked me. I'd like also, hopefully the letter will be phrased in a way that the voluntary decision is the property owners', and that really needs to be highlighted, because first impressions of opening a letter from the city are usually not good. So, make sure that they understand that this is voluntary, and if they don't want to be in it, they don't have to be in it.
That's what we did the last annexation. It was, made them aware that it was their decision solely. Of course, at that, before we proceeded with that one, we actually had a workshop meeting here that we had a PowerPoint presentation showing them the area and what the zonings for each area they could request to have, and things of that nature. Because planning commission did set up land use for that area prior to the annexation last time that we annexed. So, I could, when I send the letters out, I give them the same letters that were sent out before, telling them what their property would be recommended for, as far as the land use goes.
Item number nine, reports and discuss discussion and information. Nine point one is the Planning and Zoning Department, Mr. LeVorn.
As you can see, MAPCO is going pretty strong. When they first started, we had some problems with them, not wanting to build it according to the plans that was approved, so we took care of that up front and got them back on track, so they should have the building built according to the plans that were approved, so...
Thank you, sir.
Is there any more interest in that lot next door?
No, sir. Nine point two, city engineer, and he's not here tonight. Nine point three, city attorney, Mr. Cantrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep this brief, but I think I would be remiss if I don't mention this. Tomorrow, Thursday night, there is an item on the agenda to appoint, to fill through slots on the planning commission. I have mentioned this before at the board commissioners meeting, but I just wanted to mention it to, so that the non-board commissioner members that are on the planning commission would have the same benefit of the information that was discussed at the board of commissioners regarding those two seats becoming available. Some of this was not discussed at the board of commissioners meeting, but the board of commissioners, at the board of commissioners meeting, and the commissioners that are here can please correct me if I say something that's wrong, but it was discussed about giving the citizens more input on the planning commission, and Commissioner Carroll and Commissioner Johnson resigned their position because they were members of the board of commissioners and also on the planning commission to allow appointment of citizens to have greater citizen participation on the planning commission. What I think I would be remiss in saying if I didn't mention both Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Carroll and say to you as you were departing, "It has been my privilege to work with you on the planning commission and on the board of commissioners, and since you'll be leaving the planning commission, I just wanted to pass that along." I did want to say, and it was discussed at the board of commissioners meeting, that neither Commissioner Johnson or Commissioner Carroll did anything that's legally wrong. The board of commissioners didn't do anything that's legally wrong. The state statute, which is mirrored in our city charter, says that on the planning commission, you can have up to nine members, and that was newly passed years ago. The planning commission must be made up of representation from board of commissioners. That minimum representation is either the mayor or the mayor's designee, and one other commissioner from the board of commissioners elected by the board of commissioners to sit on the planning commission. The statute does not say how the other makeup will be. If the board chose to put additional commissioners on there, they could do so. The state legislature was not bashful about saying, "You shall have at least the mayor or the mayor's designee and one other commissioner elected by the board of commissioners." If they wanted to say that the remaining seven positions would be made up of totally citizens, they could have said so. That has been debated and argued, and it hasn't been tried anyplace, so there's no, there are no appellate court decisions on that. But I just wanted to make sure that the remaining members of this board that was not present at that meeting or did not hear about it, that the reason that Commissioner Carroll and Commissioner Johnson resigned from the planning commission was not anything other than the fact that they agreed that there should be more citizen input to this board, so that what this board comes up with, if it passes on to the board of commissioners in its normal course, or if it's an appeals action to the board of commissioners, that you will have a different set of opinions and a different set of eyes looking at it at this level. I think they could be commended for that, they didn't have to do that, and I would have been remiss if I didn't say that it's been my pleasure and an honor for me to work with them on the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantrell. Nine point four is the city manager, and Ms. Hyde is not here tonight. Item number ten is communication from the planning commission members. Mr. Sutton. Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Smith.
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Tye.
Well, I'll take the opportunity to say Christmas season is right around the corner, and I encourage everyone to shop local. I encourage everyone to start their Christmas shopping in Fairview, and hopefully you'll find most what you want, but support our businesses, they are what keeps us moving as a city. Support your neighboring crafts and business, that's where people see their community coming together, and I appreciate all that the commissioners, the planning commission has done. I think focusing on our future is where we're focusing, and I appreciate you making the statement that it's not on the website of our future plans, because that's something that I would like to know that all people are well informed, so we can communicate openly. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
I would like to thank all the citizens for coming out tonight. I think it's very important for us to understand and get our questions answered, so that we understand thoroughly. I vote the way I vote because I love this city and the community and the surrounding area, even if it's county or city, and I have an understanding of where we're going, and my total thought is protection of everyone, and it has nothing to do with monetary, it's just the protection of everyone and their property and the neighboring properties that affect them. And also, I'd like to say thank you to the veterans for their service to our country.
Mr. Benson.
I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Took the words out of my mouth. Mr. Sutton, I thank, like I speak here.
Sorry to come back to you, but at the same time, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and each and every one of us need to count our blessings, because we are truly blessed people, and everyone in this city and everyone in this country, and we need to consider that, and consider those who do not have, and just pray for them.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, it's good to see everyone, and I also would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. We stand adjourned.
Man, it was just Easter, what happened to this year?
Gone in a hurry.